Okay, everyone, welcome to the Monday, October 23rd, 2023, meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is now seven o'clock PM. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have invocation and pledge of allegiance by Stephanie Otto, commander of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post 324.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Guide our hearts and our mind in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Empower your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may be, may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have a couple of presentations. First up, presentation of police department employee of the third quarter 2023 by Stephanie Otto, commander of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post 324.
Thank you. Each quarter of the American Legion Post 324, Jersey Village Police Department employee of the quarter selection committee, meet to review a list of candidates selected by their peers. This is in no way a simple effort, simple task. Of all employees of the department are outstanding individuals and serve a purpose greater than themselves. For the third quarter of 2023, the American Legion selection for officer of the quarter is Corporal Eric Alveda. Corporal Alveda has shown a high level of professionalism, dedication, and proactivity. He loves his job and his work performance shows it. We thank you for your service and dedication to the department and our community. All of these attributes work together to ensure Jersey Village Police Department works smoothly and provides our residents peace of mind and makes Jersey Village a destination community. Many other officers were nominated for this quarter. Thank you for your continued performance and dedication to our community. Thank you.
Okay, and next up, we have presentation of employee of the month award for October 2023 to Gabriel Colchado, Austin Blais, city manager.
Mayor, councilors, our employee of the month, his brother was so proud of him, he got him tickets to tonight's game, so he's not here with us tonight. But I do want to recognize him and thank him for his work and the accommodations in the packet there.
Well, congratulations to him, and I think not only is that a very good excuse, I, I think that just added bonus points for employee of the month there. So, well, congratulations, Gabriel. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to citizens' comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first card I have is from Jim Fields.
Hello, my name is Jim Fields. I live in 16413 St. Hillier, and thank you, mayor and city council, for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. The first one I want to talk about are the committee restrictions. I hope it, it takes time for people to, I think, to have the knowledge and experience to lead some of these committees. And I believe by putting term limitations on there, you may be taking away that experience. And it's just my two cents on that one. But the other thing I think is important, it's been brought up by other citizens, are the, the full disclosure on any financial conflicts. We have that signed off if they had anything. Thank you. Code enforcement, I want to thank city manager Austin Blais for reaching out. That was very nice. He was talking about we have some work to be done in, in the city. I really appreciate that. He was asking me if I saw anything. But what, what's still concerning to me, we have a mayor and a sitting city council that drives through the city, and these, these violations are still there. And I'm hoping that you would take it seriously to make sure the codes are enforced. Because we can have the best streets, the best pools, best new city hall, but it's all for naught if we don't have the right citizens living here and the neighborhood goes to you-know-what.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, may I respond with a statement of fact?
Why don't we wait until he's done with his comments?
The other one, the high rise on Jersey Village, I couldn't believe that. I'm not sure, I guess that means everything on Jersey Drive and Lakeview, all the way down to Ecuador. It's going to have to be, I guess, 10 to 11 feet. Unbelievable. I'm, I'm not sure if that's good for the city. I couldn't believe it. I don't know if that comes with an elevator or not. That's incredible. Reminds me of the beach house I have. Also, one last thing I request you guys is to change the golf course should be reassigned, or I don't know what else, what you call it, to a department rather than an enterprise. So there will be an actual budget for the golf course, so we'll actually know what the real expenses are rather than transferring funds over to the general, you know, from the general fund to subsidize the golf course. Anything else? One thing, I did go to the town hall, come and see, show and tell, whatever you want to call it now, which was kind of unusual to me. I was hoping to see what we're seeing today. I did find out what was kind of concerning was on the pool. There were no estimates done on the repairs on the pool. And I thought that's, that was very, that's not very prudent. If you're going to replace something, generally you're going to go through and see what the costs are so to let the citizens know what it costs to replace it. So I'm hoping in the future, before we make these bonds, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that the citizens know the reason why we're doing it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Jim. And I think there was a council member wanted to make a statement.
Mr. Fields, I did want to make a comment. You know, you like to, you come in here every month and you make the comment about the city council and the mayor not reporting things that they see. And I think you're making an assumption without having any facts, because we choose not to sit up here and list all the emails we've sent. I mean, I can tell you that I alone sent three emails and submitted multiple things through the city app this weekend. So I would appreciate if you, if you have interest in that and you want to know that information, is to ask us. Because when you come up here and talk about it, it's not a back and forth conversation. So as a statement of fact, we do report what we see.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I'm sorry that-
We're not going to do this anymore.
No, Jim, I'm sorry.
Chris, after the conference.
No, sir. No, sir.
I am just saying, port order.
If, if, no, Jim, if you, if you, if you have, Jim, if you have comments for council member McCray, you are welcome to give them to her after the meeting. You, this is, this is not a back and forth, Jim. This is not a back and forth, Jim. I'm sorry. And folks, I just, just real quick, I do highly encourage folks to reach out to city council members if they have questions about things. If you think this is the best venue for a back and forth, it is not. It is the worst possible venue for a back and forth. The best venue, if you want to have an actual conversation, please reach out to council members if you have questions for them, or if you believe that we're not doing the things that we should be doing and you would like to hear from us, then please do reach out to us. Because that gives you all the opportunity in the world to truly hear from us and for us to hear from you and to have an actual dialogue and not just talk at each other.
I'll also mention in the frequently asked questions that was published by the city on the bond lists the reasoning or the process for getting estimates for pool repair and why we didn't move forward with those.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next speaker. The next speaker I have is Rick Faircloth.
Just a moment. My name is Rick Faircloth. I'm at 16010 Lakeview. The two items I want to talk about tonight, the first one is the resolution that you have before you about the term limits on boards and committees. I read the background that whoever found that information that presided in your packet, and I read the packet, that 60% of the cities that were screened don't have any term limits. Four of them do. And the way this resolution is prepared, it says that you're limited to no more than five years on any board or commission. So the way I read that, after I've been on there five terms, 10 years, I'm gone. Well, that doesn't, you know, council doesn't, when they come up, I've seen people on this council who have served 10 years, stayed off one year, and they've ran again for another 10 years. So I want to make sure that it's not some weasel words in there that after you've been there 10 years. I've already spent 15 years on one of the committees. And I would hope that this, if this resolution's approved, you don't go back and start kicking people off committees because this hadn't been approved. Also, in that same resolution on the subset, on the term limitations, it says there's a provision that you could extend past the, the 10 years with a vote of four people on council. We, excuse me, we, we vote on other things on this council. It only takes three. So I don't know why four has to be there. It seems like it's, you're trying to make it real hard for people that really want to, to serve again. The, the other, the other issue is on the other ordinance that's talking about the chair and the vice chair. You, I know y'all talked about it last month and those being appointed by the, the council. You're going to have six or seven people on these committees, and they, based on their knowledge and working together, have always selected their chair and vice chair. I'd sure hate for all of the people on that, and then y'all say, oh, we want this person to be the chair or that person to be the chair, and they say, guess what? I don't want it. And you couldn't find anybody on that who wants to be the chair or the vice chair. So I just think tho, that ordinance and the other one, you need to think about it real clear before you decide to move forward. And, and back on one of the comments that you said earlier about, I have reached out to all of you on this issue. I did have a response from two of the council persons on that. But that's, I, I do know the, the protocol on how to, how to reach out. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Did you say you reached out to all council members on this issue? Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure. I, I don't want anyone to say that they emailed me and they didn't get a response. Okay, you had me worried there. Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that. Let's see, the last comment card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
Rick, I haven't got an email from you in three months. So if you'll, if you'll just forward it to me, I'm sure it's just an issue, I'll, I'll send you a reply.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 25th installment, Jersey Village began with five miles of drains, roadways, water, sewage, gas, and lighting after Clark Henry closed the Effenelm Jersey Ranch in 1948. And his family moved on to Jersey Drive in October 1954 after a few houses were built. Plans to continue developing a suburban oasis on the outskirts of Houston grew and were modified as decades saw changes in Harris County and Texas. An election to incorporate Jersey Village was held on April 16th, 1956, and 58 votes were cast. All 58 votes were in favor of incorporating, so on that day, the city of Jersey Village was, Jersey Village was officially born. Shortly thereafter, a city election was held and a mayor and five council members were elected. Jersey Village is a home rule city and operates under a manager council form. This enables the local government to have full control over development of the zoned city, such as the maintenance of streets. The town's reported population rose from 493 in 1961 to 966 in 1980. In 1982, it was 4,084. In 1988, 5,143. In 1990, 4,938. And 6,880 in 2000. The 2010 population was 7,620, and per the 2020 census of 7,921 persons aged 65 and older were 18.8%, while those under 18 years old are 20.9%. In 2021, residents had a median age of 37 and a median household income of $83,877. 50.4% of the adults in Jersey Village have earned degrees such as bachelor's, master's, medical, law, and PhD. Compare that 50.4% to the national average of 21.84% for all cities and towns. 50.3% of the working residents' population are employed in executive, management, and professional occupations. 80.7% of the residential real estate was built from 1970 to 1999, and the single-family homes on very large lots are considered established, not old. Since 2000, approximately 754 more homes have been built. A Houston-area real estate website highlights that Jersey Village is a small community that ranks among the best Houston suburbs. It is recognized as a small town with great plans due to its tranquility, ambiance, and fast-growing commercial and real estate development. There are a lot of amenities available in Jersey Village, including a public swimming pool, public parks, and playgrounds, and the Jersey Meadow Golf Course. Jersey Village Incorporated in 1956 owned the Jersey Ranch's 1,278 acres, which is 1.997 square miles. By December 30th, 1991, ETJ annexations increased that to 1,875 acres as 2.93 square miles, and the 2020 census shows 2,163 acres as 3.38 square miles. The city pool was approved and constructed in 1975 with the needed repairs that year and much more since then. Most of the streets and utilities infrastructure were added over six decades during the various home building sessions onto shifting clay soil with frequent and heavier weighing vehicle usage. An employee hired in 2020 was drawn to the city of Jersey Village because of the supportive community and because of the work ethic of its employees. That sounds like it really must be one of the best places to work, to live, and play. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Okay, those are all the citizen comment cards I have. That brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Blais.
Mayor, councilors, the report's in front of you, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council for the city manager?
Yeah, the home elevations are mentioned there. The process a homeowner is allowed to put in their own funds to increase the height and kind of change some of the things that are, happen. My assumption is that the very large house there looking to put a garage underneath it, somebody mentioned that as a plan, I wouldn't be surprised. But it's true, they can add to that. That's not the standard height to get out of the floodplain.
Correct, yeah. That homeowner chose to add three, three and a half feet to their elevation to go up higher than what was required by the city ordinances.
And they could do that, but they're still under the height requirement restrictions and such?
Correct, yeah. The ordinances do restrict the heights to a maximum of 25 feet plus whatever difference between the base flood elevation. So for that spot, just say that it's three feet above base flood elevations, what's required. They could be 28 feet above the base flood elevation is the maximum height, the top of the, top of the house.
Okay. And then the other question that I had is with the budget. I've noticed in my years in government, a lot of things are done for very specific reasons. And every auditor we've had up here has described our enterprise funds as enterprise funds, and it seems to me like there's a reason or a law, that's what they're called, because their function is very strategically different.
Enterprise funds, and Isabel might want to jump in on this one too, but enterprise funds are typically things like your water sewer, you know, golf courses, in some cases are. A number of cities do not have enterprise funds for their golf course. I believe we've talked about that here in council meetings and at budget meetings as to whether or not we wanted to move it from the enterprise either to a special revenue fund or back into the general fund. That's how it was set up originally, to show the profit and loss of the golf course. But that certainly could be a council decision. There's pros and cons to each one, and I know we've talked about that probably about a year or so ago as well, or maybe back in March sometime.
Yeah, we, we discussed with the auditors, because from, I came from the city of Houston. And in the city of Houston, the golf courses are special revenue funds. And each golf course has their own fund, and they cannot share the, whatever revenues they receive. They have to stay wishing, within the special revenue fund. The way that it was set up here was an enterprise fund to, because it was, it should be, it was, it's treated like a private business that we need to spend the money in order to do business. But as of today, the golf course is doing great. I don't see that we have to send, the revenue, the general fund has to make any transfers this year. So however, the, the, the city council decides we can do it. But as of now, the, the golf course is doing very good. With this year, I don't think we need to make any transfers from the general fund, even though it's budgeted.
Isabel, if I remember correctly, because I know we've discussed this before about why it's set up as an enterprise fund versus simply another department like many other parts of the city, my recollection was that by setting it up as an enterprise fund, it actually provides more information regarding the specific performance of that, of, of the course as a separate entity. Isn't that correct?
Correct. And besides that, with the enterprise fund, you can, the, the assets are depreciated and are part of the enterprise fund versus the governmental funds. The assets are, the depreciation is now part of the, of the governmental fund and is placed in another separate fund which is called, it's different, it's for just fixed assets. So that's why in the enterprise fund with the golf course, all the assets are there, but also the depreciation is part of the enterprise fund, of the, of the golf course.
I'm sure if, if council wanted to look at that and determine whether or not a different method of, of recording it was preferred, we could do that at a future meeting. I would assume probably it'd be more appropriate to do it as part of the budgeting process because I'm sure doing it at the end of a fiscal year probably would be better. But certainly, I think that provides us some information regarding some of the concerns that were raised about how it's reported.
No, I was just asking about laws. I have no interest in changing it for the very reasons you brought up. An enterprise fund is the most transparent way to do it, and so we're going to keep doing it that way.
Okay. Any other questions for the city manager regarding his report? Okay. That brings us to the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to pull an item from the consent agenda for consideration during the regular agenda? If not, then I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda, consent agenda passes unanimously. We do have a supplemental, an agenda addendum, and so I'm going to go ahead and call that first. So any members of the public, if you, if you're wondering where we are, this is in the separate sheet of paper that would have been up there along with the main agenda. So from the agenda addendum, we're going to item A1, Consider Resolution Number 2023-57, Committing Not to Build a Vehicular Bridge on Ecuador Street Over White Oak Bayou. Councilmember James Singleton.
So we had a conversation as a group a couple of months ago. It was maybe a 20-minute conversation, some may threw out an idea. We discussed it, that kind of gruesome legs.
it, that kind of gruesome legs. We had a city council meeting where people came forward and talked about, hey, I have some issues with this. I think a lot of us have evaluated this and decided what we, how we feel, but without the ability to talk to everybody, have to kind of come here and chat about it. One of the things, as I attended the town hall meeting and in talking with some people on Philippine and Shanghai, some of the impacted streets, there is a lot of people that are not interested in this bridge, and I think it would be good to clarify that we're not looking at doing this. Austin, did you have any comments? Because you had reached out and said there was some reason to maybe consider not, but...
Right, and I don't know all the conversations councillors have had with residents or not, but I know we, you know, when we talked about this back in May and June, you know, it was to look at it and to see, you know, look at the traffic studies, see if it would alleviate traffic off of Philippine and those types of things. I've also had a couple of conversations with Cyfer ISD and Tech dot to see if there'd be other ways we could reroute traffic, either right off the Beltway into the school area. And for a few different reasons, Cyfer ISD has said they don't want to have an access point right off of the Beltway, but they did say, have you guys ever considered putting a bridge on Ecuador across the bayou, because we think that would help us out a lot, especially with the bus and school traffic? So that's, that was the last conversation I had with them, which was last week.
But they weren't offering to pay for it?
We never asked either. I mean, that might be something that they would do as well, I don't know, the topic didn't come up.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
Well, I think there needs, we already have a bridge there for pedestrians, and I do think that that needs to be maintained. I think that's important, I think that's pretty vital, it's a way to get across. And it's the only safe way, considering it's very little area to walk across Jersey where that crosses.
I'll echo that. When I walk across that bridge, I definitely say a little prayer before I go. It definitely needs some help, and I think we consider all options, not even that we're a biggest fan of any of them, but it's important to consider options even when you feel like they may not be your best idea, because you're speaking on behalf of the public. But we did go out and talk to a lot of women in the women's group and the senior outreach group, and then a couple people who lived on those two streets, and it was all very, very, I mean, I don't know if I came up with one person who wanted a vehicular bridge. And I agreed, but I think when we're up here, it's our job to discuss things that even though we don't necessarily want them, it's our job to consider all of the ideas. But I do think that somehow this grew legs as that's what was going to happen, but it just, it was just an option, but loud and clear, it's not going to happen.
I don't know that I want to say that it will never happen. I mean, it depends on the growth that we have in the area, and I don't know if they'll cap the students at JV, I mean, there's a possibility it could get even bigger, and we'll have even more traffic and bigger issues, so maybe this is something that gets reconsidered later on, but I don't know that we're ready to do anything at this point in time.
I hate to cut the legs out from the resolution, but I would point out that it's a resolution, it's this council on this day is saying we're not considering doing this. And I don't feel like the resolution handcuffs future councils should there be a material change in growth and such.
Agree.
Yeah, I'd, one, agree with those sentiments. I mean, I, if we need a formal resolution, I think I'll be the fourth or fifth to say tonight that I'm not, based on sediment comments, without a detailed traffic study, spending Jersey Village money on something that would help Cyfer ISD. I'd like to see alternatives and work through those more than just two conversations with them. I know that there's entrances from Gulf Bank, and we could look at extending that if necessary to improve traffic versus building a bridge that is causing a safety concern for many involved.
I will say this, and this is one of the frustrating things about sitting up here on this day, and maybe one of the reasons why sometimes you get a lot of very talented, very outstanding people out there who have little interest in sitting up here. Because we, this literally came about because, in our city staff, their whole job is to bring ideas to us, to, in fact, we have told them, challenge our thinking on the way we're approaching things, come to us with challenging ideas. If they're not good ideas after we discuss them and we say no, that's fine, but we are better off for having had that discussion. I think the vast majority of people in the city can see where that in and of itself is a good thing. We should have the ability to have discussions about issues, or about ideas, or solutions that may in isolation sound terrible to some people, but that we need to have that conversation to be sure that we test those ideas and determine if they're good for our city or not. Out of a five-minute discussion along this line, there were, and the reason I think James brought this up, there have been repeated claims or rumors, or whatever you want to call them, despite all of everyone's best efforts at multiple meetings and in multiple emails to say no. This was simply something that was discussed as a what-if, should we have this discussion just to see if it makes sense? And then it, suddenly, we've got, what was it, the last meeting or the meeting before, we had five to seven people all in a row that apparently had gotten some email from someone that said, they're going to do this tonight, tell them to vote no, and I'm like, I don't know what we're voting no about. Because it was something that didn't exist. It was a rumor that kind of carried on, because unfortunately, a lot of those people that came to speak didn't reach out to council to ask, hey, are you planning on doing this? All that to say, we shouldn't have to have, I think this is good intention, this is very, very good intention, to make clear, because all other efforts to do so have apparently failed, but to make clear that this is not something that's on the table right now. Should we sit here and say we will never consider this, even though we've barely discussed this for all of ten minutes? Yes, there are a lot of people that don't like it, but, you know, I don't want to sit here and say that we would never do it, or that there would not arise a situation where we would consider it, because, you know, you never know how things may change in the future. But that being said, I totally, you know, if council wants to adopt this, they can. As James pointed out, it's simply an expression of our position as it exists now. People on council change, situations change. I just, my only worry would be whether or not, if something changed where we decided we needed to backtrack and look at that more carefully, whether this would be, create an even worse situation.
I will say, I have no problems, I have no problems with this, but what bothers me more than anything is that if every time somebody comes up with some crazy idea that is not rooted in any truth whatsoever, is that are we going to have to come out with something saying, no, it's wrong? Like, that to me is the one thing, like, because that's very frustrating, because that should not be what this is about. I also think at this point, we're to the point where we do need to do this tonight, because I think it's gotten ridiculously out of hand, but...
Well, I will move to approve Resolution twenty-two three fifty-seven.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Hopefully, that puts that to bed. Okay, that brings us to our regular agenda. Item G1, Consider Resolution Number twenty-two three dash five three, Adopting a Policy Regarding Standard Regulations for All Boards, Commissions, and Committees to Include But Not Limited to Term Limits, Appointment Practices, Member Attendance, and Member Service. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. So back in the meeting of council on September eighteen, there was discussions that council would like to have some information about term limits for city boards, commissions, and committees. So to prepare for the item, I reached out to clerks in the area that are part of the Salt Grass Chapter of the Texas Municipal Clerks Association, and in your packet, you'll see that there's several cities that did respond to that. There were four that do currently have term limits, and there were six that do not. There was also mention that the City of La Mark used to have them, but they no longer do. And of all the cities that currently practice term limits for their boards, some have codified it into their code of ordinances, those term limits, and others just use a practice of policy. And so in considering all that information, to me, it felt like it would be better, instead of codifying that into the code of ordinances, that a policy would be the better option if council does decide to go forward with that. In the packet, I did put together a policy for your review, and that kind of laid out some of the provisions for setting these term limits, and I fashioned that policy in accordance with the information that I received from the other cities and the policies that they currently have in place. And it does set the term limit at two, excuse me, at five two-year terms, which would be ten years. And I kind of chose that because it was similar to what council does, but that could be changed whatever the council decides. And then as far as the vote of four, I just picked that up from what the other cities have, so that's something else that the council would like to change, they could change that as well. They can change anything in there, y'all can change anything, but it was just a guideline for you to have before you to kind of have a feel for what a policy might look like.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this.
I read through it, and I don't see any big issues here. I think the term limits is the only thing that should have some discussion about, and I would say that it's a really good thing that you included term limits and details about term limits, because you got information, there was a big smash, sixty, forty, could go either way. It is so much easier to have a conversation up here with a preset and list of rules and go from there. You give us a starting point to go from, that's what we need, it makes this whole meeting go a whole lot faster. On that note, term limits, you know, volunteerism's going down, has been going down for a long time, it's really hard to find people. I don't know that they're really needed. I feel like council can make adjustments, and that can be kind of an unwritten thing, and we consider that now, when we have people there for a long time. But you can make the same exact argument for keeping term limits, and a vote of four just means a, think about this, consider this, it doesn't mean you can't do it. There's people like Rick Faircloth who spoke that bring historical knowledge to the table. We just, we recognize that because we instituted longevity pay in city employees that have vested interest and knowledge in the city. So we recognize longevity and see its value. I think there may be a reason to keep them in there, though.
I have to say, I don't know that I'm more interested, that I'm necessarily interested in term limits as much as I would be in adding a required training that would either be done by city staff, it could be somebody brought in from outside. I'll be honest, Rick Faircloth could probably run the training himself, because while he is, when I was on PNZ, he followed directions the way it was supposed to be followed, everybody understood what their role was in the meeting, and I think that's important, because there's nothing worse than walking into being appointed to one of these boards and you don't understand how it's run, because I know the Parks and Rec Board is run very differently than planning and zoning. Planning and zoning runs the agenda just like we do here today, Board of Adjustments, Board of Appeals, it's the same thing, and it's definitely done more in, like, what I'll say, like a governmental, government style, for lack of a better word. And I think that training is important, I also think training would maybe keep us out of legal concerns.
I'll just say, my very first term ever as council member, what, two thousand eight? Fifteen years ago? This was one of the things that I brought up, was term limits, and obviously, it didn't go over well. So, I mean, we do have the power to vote, and we have the power to appoint, and we have the power to remove individuals if they're not attending or if they're not fulfilling their obligations. So do we need to implement a policy or codify term limits? I don't think so. I think we should continue to give ourselves the flexibility to do what needs to be done when it needs to be done.
I'd agree, Councilman Shepherd. I was probably one of the people that even suggested to Lori that we look at term limits, and then, as I review, part of my personal policy is, I'm not necessarily in favor of those on the political spectrum, although council is term-limited. But in Congress, for example, they're not. Maybe they should be, but they are because the voters have the opportunity every time to vote for or against a sitting person, and as Sherri pointed out, we have that opportunity to do that. So...
Can I jump in there?
You may.
So I would agree with you if I felt like, when I first came, in my first time, if I felt like people who were getting reappointed were automatically, and this is what I was told, like, if they are saying they want reappointment, that is it, you will reappoint them. And I had somebody who was on two or three committees and some newbies coming in, so I was like, more community involvement, yay, and I had a rough couple months after that of citizen comments from a few people about that decision. So if I felt like everybody who was coming up for a reappointment was fairly considered, just like when we run again, we are fairly considered, it's not like I automatically get it because I was already on council, I would be okay with not term limits, but I just feel like sometimes there's this awkward, like, do I replace somebody for some fresh eyes, or am I, is it going to be, like, viewed as something personal, what has, is nothing personal at all, it's just you're reading these applications and, oh my goodness, look at all of these things that this applicant has on there, like, this would be amazing on this committee, but this person who has been on it for four years, they want reappointment, and it's just a, it was an awkward situation to be in, I mean, I made it out on the other side, but ultimately, I did what I felt like was right for the community, and I stand by my decision on that. But if we had this understanding on council that reappointment was just not automatic, then I'm fine with that, but that would be my only protection, if I'm just being super honest, that it was awkward.
I will say this, and I think Councilmember Mitchum brings up a very, very good point, which is, when you're talking about a policy, you're not talking about a person directly. And I think it, and I'm not necessarily endorsing this particular policy, but if the goal is to try to get as many people involved as possible and to allow others an opportunity to contribute in a more formal way to the governance of our city, this is a way to do it. The challenge, I think, is that unlike all of you who vote for us, vast majority of you do it without us ever knowing one way or another whether you voted for us or not. Maybe even if you have a sign out in your yard that says one thing, that's no guarantee that you voted for that person or not. When we're up here and we vote, it's out there for the whole world to see, it's broadcast on the internet, it's as public as it can be, which I'm not disagreeing with, but it is on some level, it can make it a little bit difficult, where you're in a relatively small town where you see each other, you're, you know, you're around each other all the time, so I can understand the challenge there. And certainly, Michelle is a good example of when someone can take it personally, when there's an effort to try to bring in new people. And so I'm not saying we have to make a decision on this tonight, but I think there is some value to at least having the discussion and determining whether or not we want to flesh out some sort of policy, or something that is not focused on one person and may not be carried through to another position, but kind of something that at least guides council on how it wants to approach more inclusivity as far as new people in these boards and commissions.
I'm in support of training, actually like that idea a lot. Okay. I would recommend that we change all the subsections to numbered subsections, A1, A2, because right now, it's A- A1, A2, because right now it's AA, BA. And then, secondly, I would recommend that we change Section D, now numbered three, and add the following. Department heads shall facilitate training for all appointed members within the first 90 days of service. I am not saying the department heads have to provide, be the one to provide it or any of that. I am actually really interested in working with city manager to develop that, and I'm even willing to come in and help teach that. I've got some ideas and concepts on some things because I've coached and sat beside a lot of these chairmans and chairwomen's and tried to help them through the meetings, and it's a struggle. And I think training would be a really good thing to do for them.
The only other suggestion I would make if we're going to keep the, I don't know how, whether we have a consensus one way or another on term limits, but I would say it probably needs to be more similar to how the council term limits are, where it's more consecutive terms, not once you've had five, two-year terms, you're completely done for all time.
I don't think anybody was really interested in keeping the term limits.
Okay.
I think it's more of, or the four people have to vote. Is, did y'all want to do the four, or y'all, I think that we keep with our regular voting, the way we vote normally.
Are we saying that council is appointing the chair? Are we all agreeing that council's going to appoint the chairpersons or the committees?
That's a different ordinance.
That's the next ordinance. Sorry. Didn't mean to get it confused.
Because some, some.
It is confusing.
Then I would not agree with the term limits. I don't think we need term limits.
Okay. Then, let's, let's see. I think, I think we're to the point where I can move to approve Ordinance 2023-53. As it's written, with the changes to renumber the subsections, to add the term I wrote about training to the support section, and striking Section C, three term limits.
You mean Resolution 2023-53?
Uh huh. Did I say ordinance?
You said ordinance, so.
Oh, no, I meant resolution. Sorry. Thank you.
Can we add in the training to this part as far as procedure?
Yes, that's, I did that.
To be clear, you're referring to striking the part that is currently Section C, subsection C, but will, when renumbered, be C3.
Yep, term limits.
Just to be perfectly clear.
That was one of the reasons I put the word term limits. I thought I laid it out very clear. Then I said ordinance. Are you clear with what we, what I have there, or would you like me to go through it again?
She said I do.
I was going to get with you later, so I can write it in the minutes.
Is all of council clear on what the motion is?
I'm just going to, just going to go through it again. I'm moving to approve Resolution 2023-53. I would like to strike Section C, service subsection C, term limits. I would like to add to subsection D, C, subsection support, department heads shall facilitate training for all appointed members within the first 90 days of appointment. And then I would like to renumber all of the subsections to numbers instead of letters. Got it.
Can I make a suggestion, or does that have to be a whole new thing?
Oh, go ahead.
It was on D, subsection C, where it says facilitate training. Can we make it say in-person? In-person, in-person training, so it can't be done over the phone or via Zoom. It needs to be in-person.
I amend my motion to state, the department heads shall facilitate in-person training for all appointed members within the first 90 days of service, of appointment.
Okay. That's what we would call a friendly, friendly suggested amendment.
We don't have rules up here, so.
I know.
Do what we want.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
We'll give it to Mayor Porton Mitchum. So we have a motion made by Councilmember Singleton, seconded by Mayor Porton Mitchum. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item G2, Consider An Ordinance 2023-25, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Jersey Village at Chapter 14, Article 2, Section 14-22, Subsection A, to correct the appointment month, and at Subsection B, to address the method of the appointment of the board's chair and vice chair, providing perseverance and providing an effective date. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yeah, so Mayor, this is exactly an ordinance to make those changes that you read, introduced in the item.
Okay. Discussion amongst council.
So I, I don't think we should, as a council, make appointments of the chairpersons of the board. I think the board needs to make that decision. Again, I think we need to govern it, and hopefully with training, that will alleviate some of the concerns we've had in the past. But I think we continue to let the committees govern themselves and choose their own, elect their own chairs and vice chairs.
Yeah, this is specific for the Board of Adjustments, which is a unique committee. I think we said this in the last council meeting. Whereas council doesn't have direct oversight of their output. If someone has issues with the Board of Adjustments, they appeal directly to court. And so maybe training would work. And that could help. I do kind of side with Mr. Faircloth's argument that he made during citizens' comments, that the people in the committee may know the committee members best, better than council would, especially at time of appointment. But I see the need for stronger oversight that we can, council can present, given the magnitude of consequences should there be an issue on the board.
So for this board specifically, it's different than the other boards, where if some, this person, whoever is chair and vice chair, could you elaborate a little bit on that for me, Austin?
I think what we're looking for is explaining exactly how the Board of Adjustment is.
How their, this, this board specifically.
So this board, by state statute, has to set their, their rules and regulations. And part of their rules that they adopted do state that the chair and the vice chair will be made by the membership at their first meeting, I believe in October. So there is specific guidelines that they have put in place that run their meetings. They have guidelines that state when there's a contest before them, that they're going to call witnesses, how those witnesses are going to be called, how the public hearing is going to be conducted. It is verbatim in the rules and regulations that they've approved. The problem is, is that they don't always follow those rules.
And another piece with this board is that their actions are appealable to the court system, where most everything else is a recommendation to the city council. So when they make a decision, that's the decision.
So then, Lori, what would you, do you have any suggestions here on what council could do to give some better oversight to this committee?
I feel that we've had trouble with this board for quite a while. And it used to be that the board would meet and we did not have a city attorney present. And because of the problems that we've encountered, it's been several years back that we decided from now on, when the board would meet, that city council, that the city attorney would need to be there because they needed to have that direction. And I think that between the city attorney and myself, we do speak up quite a bit and try to interject and try to say, oh, wait, no, we're at this part in, in the rules, the, you know, the outline that you're supposed to be following. Perhaps with the training, like you're suggesting, maybe that could help. But I, I think that it's still going to need to have some handholding. Because even myself, I've been to how many meetings over the last, you know, years of my time in government? It would be very difficult for me to run a meeting. So, because it's something that they're not doing even as often as council. You know, the Board of Adjustment maybe met two times last year and the year before that. I think they didn't meet at all. So you're running into that problem, that even if you're going to have the training, that person isn't going to be well-practiced, and it's going to be difficult for them. So I think that as, me being secretary of the board and also the city attorney, I think we need to speak up more, and we need to, we need to guide them better than what we've been doing in the past.
I had an internal guess when you said the city secretary, the city attorney was not attending those meetings, and I thought you meant recently, until you cleaned that up and said several years ago. Because I was like, oh, my gosh, how did I miss that? They have, they've got to be at that meeting. What I hear, though, is that we've known we've had an issue. The city secretary and city attorney have started to attend for several years. The city secretary and city attorney have been more vocal, and we have not resolved the issue. Which leads me to believe that we do need to be appointing.
Just on this one specific board, because how it goes straight to the court system, I feel like this is, if we had to pick one where we did need to, you know, checks and balances, I would only say this, this specific committee.
And that's my concern, is how, how do we ensure that they're accountable to the citizens of JV? We are, we are appointing them, but in every other board, their actions pretty much just are a recommendation to us, and then we do rubber stamp it 99% of the time. But this one, if there's any mistake, there are legal ramifications, and most of the time, when they deny things, there's a lawsuit coming. And it directly impacts the city's budget when mistakes are made and a lawsuit comes because of how the meeting was ran.
Given the amount of risk that is associated with this particular board, do we need to change the composition? Is this a board that needs to be made up of, of council members?
Lori, what does state law say regarding, because I know some of the constraints are placed upon us by state law?
I, I don't know. I know that it has to be a five-member board. And I think the council does have an option of whether they want to have those alternates or not. I'm not sure, I'm not certain if the alternates are required. But it does have, it does have also requirements of when they vote. It has to be a certain, I think it's 75% of the board has to, like, four, four members has to vote. So I don't know if council can serve in that position.
I got to hold this down. Okay. Yeah, council could be on the board. It is just a minimum of five members. Council can be on it. That's a policy decision. And I will add, I'm not, you know, we don't do policy, but I just wanted to add that the ZBOA, you can only remove for cause. And then there has to be a public hearing. Unlike your other boards, those are very different. So that's a big difference on this board.
And when you say remove, you mean short, before their term is up? When their term is up, it's wide open.
Correct, yes.
Thanks.
We did do a removal at one time in the past. We've had a removal.
I'm just going to say it. I don't think I'm interested in serving on that board, and I think that it should be a group of citizens.
But that being said, I don't.
It's just a suggestion.
No, I actually don't think it's a bad suggestion. I, I think it's a, yeah. I think, I do think, it makes me wonder if maybe we need to start setting some requirements for service for that because of the, I don't know, or maybe for application, is there something else we need to start looking at? Or maybe it's just council needs to do a better job of picking people for that board because it's a, it's not an easy board. Like you said, it doesn't meet but every once in a while, but it could also meet frequently, dependent upon when people get upset about things. So it's kind of all over the place. You can't really predict it. I just, but I do think we need to, we need to think really hard about this one.
So it's also possible, maybe it don't, I can't believe I'm going to say this. It may not necessarily require that council serve as the board, but I do think council selecting the chair is helpful because you, that's the person who's ultimately going to be directly responsible for ensuring the flow of the proceedings and making sure that everyone follows the rules, at least in a more direct manner. We could also have it where a member of council serves as the chair. Now, it could be either, either, either as, either, either as a rule or council can choose to appoint one of its own as the chair.
What about, instead of that, what about requiring there, requiring there to be two council liaisons instead of just one, and they need to be present at those meetings as guidance? I don't know if that makes a difference, if that helps. I don't know, Austin, if you have any opinions on this?
I think the problem is a liaison usually has just been there to sort of answer questions as asked and then to report back to council. They're not, they're not really active participants.
No, but our concerns are all procedural.
Correct.
They're all, everything that I can recall, it's all procedural.
But I mean, you already have, you already have people advising on the sides. Adding more may not necessarily, that are not direct participants may not necessarily solve the issue.
When somebody mentioned council, I was like, no, I don't really like the idea of all of us being that board. And then there was some other suggestion, but you might be on to something there. Do we word it that a council member, we can appoint a specific person, but yeah, a council member's a non-voting facilitator of the, is the non-voting chairman?
Does the, under state law, does the chair have a vote, or does it not specify either way?
They have a vote when I was there.
If we.
The chair probably does have a vote, yes.
If we point five others.
I'd have to look into it, whether you, if you want to stack it and then have a non-voting chair.
I feel like we're making this too difficult. Why don't we just agree to appoint the chair and vice chair? And then I feel like we're making it two steps too difficult here by throwing us in the mix of being a member.
The only reason I, the only reason I brought it up is the concern was raised about the person who chairs that commission or committee not necessarily having regular experience with the flow of a meeting and the rules and all of that. Whereas all of us up here, at least to some degree, are on a monthly basis practicing, maybe not great, but.
What about having?
At least having some practice.
I think you're just pointing to that. What about having the mayor be the facilitator of the meeting and running the meeting, but with no vote?
And that was why I was hesitant to bring it up.
Well, I feel like Bobby would enjoy that.
I only got 18 more months, so. I, I would be, I would be okay with doing it, and I guess fair notice to the next person who comes along.
The other idea we had, right, was training. And do we think training, in addition to having a city attorney, in addition to having a council liaison, if not other council members in attendance, if they can, in addition to the city secretary being there, is that, you know, is that enough rather than having official council membership? Because if.
Yeah, so we've, Lori does a fantastic job of writing a script. Verbatim, step by step, exactly what to say.
In 40-point font.
In very large font, and it does not get followed. I mean, we remind them before the meetings, this is the script, stick to it, don't deviate. This is what you need to do. Do this, do this. And 30 seconds into the meeting, it's, well, we're on this point. No, we're still on page one. We're not on page seven. It's, there's some things that we've tried to do that just don't work.
Okay.
I feel like then we're all speaking the same language, that it seems like we just need to have more voice in appointment.
Yeah, I'm not so sure. The problem is a systemic meter procedural, although it's happened times before.
Who can, who can stop the meeting once it started? If the, if the chair's running this meeting and the city's. and the city secretary or the city attorney feel we need to stop and bring this to council, can they stop the proceeding?
Well, I don't know what you would be, you know, wanna stop and bring to council that council could fix. I mean, you can lose a quorum, that's one way to stop a meeting.
We had people refuse to vote last time, mainly because I don't think they even understood what they were being asked.
Yes, I think.
And so, I think that's what caused some of the problems.
You know, I, I just wanna add, and I hope I don't get too much from it. But in all the years that I've been here, we've only had two cases go to district court. One was on the sign, which ultimately we won. And the other was this recent thing that we're kind of discussing now. So, I think it's important to, to know that, that it, while it seems like it's a huge issue, it's only happened twice that something has gone to district court.
Maybe we take some incremental steps here. I think what, at least with the training, I think that, that we just put in place, hopefully that will help some. Just while we're looking at this, Lori, is the September change, is that something where we just, because of the, the timing there, it just made more sense to have that changed from October to September for the appointments?
Oh, yeah, because we make all the appointments in September right now. Even though it says October, we're making them in, in September. So, and the term starts October 1. That's the only reason why I made that change.
I also noticed it says that the, the member shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council. We've never quite done that either. Not that I'm interested in starting. I'm more than happy to concede that to council overall. But the, why don't we start with some, before we go too far with saying, oh, now we need to put a member of council on there or whatever? Maybe we take some incremental steps, see if that helps. If we see problems crop up the next go around, then maybe we start discussing some additional steps.
So, so we still need to prove this for the month changes?
Correct. That seems to be an obvious one.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we've been doing it ever since I've been here in September, and it says October.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna fix it, though. I'm a huge fan of fixing things in the city ordinances, try to go through when we can. So, that being the case, we're not going to appoint, we're gonna move forward with training and, and do that route, then.
So, y'all don't wanna do the BOA just, or the appointment just for the BOA?
I do.
Council, council appointing the chair for the Board of Adjust, Board of.
My gosh.
BOA only.
I mean, we sat around and talked about us being on the committee, this oversight, that oversight, training. I feel like, in the very least, I, I think our voice, we, we owe it to the citizens to have some voice in this for checks and balances.
So, I'm here, at least I hear a majority, it sounds like, that would like to keep that Section 3 on this proposed ordinance.
Only for, only for this, not for, like, not for the rest?
Only for BOA.
Okay, so this, this change would only be for the Board of Adjustment?
Correct.
It, it doesn't.
So, it sounds like we've got a consensus on approving the ordinance as written.
I wasn't sure where you stood.
No, I, I said appoint just for the BOA.
Okay. My concern is if we don't, how do we fix? These happen so infrequently. I don't think there's a way, we're gonna be caught in the back end again. And so.
There's too much risk associated with this committee to not have that.
So, I moved to approve ordinance 2023-25.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to item G3. A lot of these seem so similar from one to the next. I'm making sure I get the right one. Consider resolution number 2023-5 for appointing members to serve on the Board of Adjustment for the term beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2025, and appointing a chair and vice chair for the Board of Adjustment for the term beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Okay, so if we all look at Exhibit A, this will kind of walk us through that item to make these appointments. I'm trying to get there, sorry.
Can I jump in real quick? I'm gonna recuse myself. Lori called me a few days ago and let me know that someone in my family has applied for this board, and that was the first time I learned about that. But I'm gonna go ahead and just step aside while you have the rest of this topic.
Okay, so currently, there aren't any open positions on the board, but positions 1, 2, 3, and A1 are up for reappointment for the term that begins on October 1 and will end September 30 of 2025. It is a two-year term. Additionally, since council made that amendment to the Code of Ordinances, there will be a need to appoint a chair and a vice chair. And that term for the chair and vice chair will only be a one-year term, beginning Sept, October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024. All of the people serve, currently serving on the board, Nestor Mena, Joe Pennington, Tom, Thomas Simcheck, and Judy Tidwell, their positions are up for reappointment. There are three people that have submitted applications that are interested in being considered for appointment, Ben Melson, Bill Smothers, and Andrew Mitchum. Also in your packet, I included information about the entire board, the other three members of the board that are not, their terms are still in the process. And that way, you have their applications to consider when you make the appointment for chair and vice chair.
Can I get clarification on Bill, Ben Melson? He was appointed to something else, right? Or did I, in the last one?
He was appointed last month to, is it one of the TERS, TERS 2?
The local government corporation.
The LGC. I just wanted to make sure we were, that I understood that correctly. Okay, I like keeping Nestor in this position. I would like to see then, if Ben Melson is on another board, I think I'd like to add Bill Smothers and Andrew Mitchum. But I'd like to move Judy Tidwell up. And then between Bill Smothers and Andrew Mitchum, one of them be the alternate?
My, my question regarding alternates, would, would the current alternate number 2, should, should there be other members move up? Would that alternate number 2 be the full ranking member? Voting member, not ranking.
Which page is it?
Just to be clear, Lori, we, can we move anyone? We can't move anyone whose appointment's not up, correct? Like, if there's an alternate who's not being currently considered?
So, what you're asking me is the three members that are in, within their term of office, if you would want to take one of those three members and put them into one of these that are now open?
So, since Judy Tidwell is the only alternate that's currently up for reappointment, is Judy Tidwell the only alternate member that could be moved into a full, a non-alternate position?
If the other, if the other alternate is not up for reappointment right now, does that mean they have to stay where they're at?
I think yes.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry.
That's what my assumption was, but.
Okay. So, then I stand by my original statement.
Okay, but.
So, you're saying leave Nestor?
Leave Nestor.
Appoint?
Yeah, I, I, I am not sure that I see why. All of the other boards, we move the alternates up. 3 to 2, 2 to 1, 1.
The only board we do that on is the Parks and Rec that automatically happens.
It does automatically. But we've also had a history of doing that. In this case, the only problem I see with moving alternate 2 up to alternate 1 and then appointing somebody into the, the open A2 position is the argument of you can't remove somebody without just cause. Well, what are they gonna do? We just extended their term, or we appointed them to a voting spot. They're not gonna sue us over this.
But does that process not apply regardless?
I think the issue would be someone would try to invalidate something that they did substantively, based on the procedural aspect of it.
So, you're saying that if we don't follow procedure and something goes to court, somebody, all somebody would need to do is pull these records and claim that in court, and they could say that that person's vote is invalid?
That's the first place I'd start.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand what she's saying, and that makes sense to me.
Okay, I can, I can live with that answer. That's not the information I had.
So, what I understood you to say is that you would reappoint Nestor in position 1, you would move Judy Tidwell into position 2, and you would point Bill Smothers to position 3, and Andrew Mitchum to alternate 1.
And I would be, I, I go back and forth, be honest, between Andrew and Bill Smothers, because I believe Bill Smothers has only lived in the city about 10 months. And I know Andrew has significantly more time in the city and being aware of city stuff. So, I'm not set on those two, on the, on that order.
Plus, also, if you're looking for a board chair that has experience in running meetings, I don't know that an alternate would serve in that role. I'm not presuming anything, but I'm just saying if you want the option to consider Andrew Mitchum as the chair, because we are appointing a chair tonight as well, from amongst the members.
I didn't think about that, but that's a good point. He does have experience with the stuff.
So, that would mean Andrew would go to position 3 and Bill into alternate 1?
Yes. But I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
I'm good with it.
I, I think it makes sense. And again, we were worried about having, kind of jumping towards the, the question of the chair, looking to someone who we feel comfortable would be able to handle the procedural elements. Obviously, he's done it.
I think it's important to have somebody that understands how to follow the, what Lori gives them.
But this, this is, we're just putting them on. Are we, is this also where we decide who's chair?
Yeah, let's talk about the slate first, if you don't.
Yeah, I only brought that up just because.
Fair enough, I mean, it's good to look at the big picture. My choice would be, I, I agree with the given slate one because given term limits that aren't official but can be subjected, also other things going on. And I like Andrew's experience. And I think I welcome new volunteers such as Mr. Smothers and hope that, but I think, you know, if he gets around the city a little longer, you know, he's.
And from what I've witnessed in those video, in those meetings, is the alternates, one time, two of the alternates actually did vote in one of the meetings. And so, it kind of comes up to who's available and who's not.
Yeah, the alternates only vote when there's not the five members. They, then they get to vote. And sometimes, when you're at the meeting, you'll see that they raise their hand to vote. But if there's the regular five members there, they're not, they're not voting.
Correct.
Not all, just in a side, not all our committees have alternates, right? I, I think most of them have enough.
P&amp;Z doesn't.
Like, seven to have.
That's correct. I think the only one, other ones that have the alternates are the Parks and Recs, and then the Charter Review has alternates.
So, we wanna list that order from what you said, Drew? I think I like the, it was Nestor, hold on, Judy, Andrew, and then Ben? Smothers?
Bill.
Bill.
Do we have consensus on the, at least the slate? Because the, the chair and vice chair question is part of the same, the same item here. So, if we have, if we have consensus on the slate, we can talk about chair and vice chair at this point.
I'm gonna have to buy him a beer after this. I got a lot of respect for Andrew, I really do. I, I think we should make Nestor the chair.
And Andrew vice chair?
I'm fine with that. I'm absolutely fine with that.
See, and I would've moved for it to be Reza Khalili versus, I mean, if we weren't gonna go, if we were gonna choose somebody other than Andrew, I would've gone with a different member.
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna give your, because you're the liaison to the committee, you've seen the good and the bad, so I'm.
You're gonna give your vote to her?
Well, my non-vote. What I'm just saying is I would, I would give that. I, I think that, that deserves some, some additional credence.
I'll be, I, I would feel more comfortable with Andrew being in that position, considering his ability to, to, his experience with following the rules and with the, the weight this holds, no matter how rare, but the weight it does hold, I think it's important. And I think, to me, somebody with experience like that is worth it in the long run.
If I might say something as well. Keep in mind that, that this appointment is just for one year. And if you had an experienced person in that position for that one year, the board would have an opportunity to see how things should look. And then it's a poss, then, you know, they'll have that in, under their belt, so to speak. So, that's something to consider.
That's a great point, Lori.
Reza is currently vice chair. I have no problem, I don't know, I haven't seen that team in operation.
I actually show, at least assuming this is correct here, I showed Joe Pennington as the vice chair.
Pennington is the vice chair, Simcheck is.
Then I, I see on some paperwork.
I think I'd be feel more, like, to be honest, at the end of the day, I think I'd feel most comfortable with, with Andrew and then Reza.
Lori, the documents are conflicting. Page 202 says Reza's the vice chair, and the 203 says Pennington. Do you know which?
I think it's Reza. We look on the website, I think the website's right.
I mean, at the end of the day, we're, regardless of what their current positions are, we're choosing, so, I mean.
Yeah, it's Reza.
Are we ready to make a motion? Can we make a motion, or?
I, my, my, the whole point I, I was pointing that out is if, if Reza was vice chair, I, I think it would, we could go with Andrew as chair and Reza continue as vice chair. Or even if not, that, to me, sounds like it could work.
I think that would be good. Hold on, I gotta, it's gonna take me a minute to get back up to the top to make the. Lori, how do you want it read out?
How do I want what?
How would you like that read out?
That you move to approve the resolution, appointing Nestor to, Nestor Mena to position 1. Number 2 was Judy Tidwell. Number 3 was Andrew Mitchum. And number 4, A1, is Bill Smothers to serve for the term October 1 through 23, ending September 30, 2025, and appointing somebody as the chair? Who was the chair? Andrew Mitchum as the chair?
Andrew Mitchum as chair and Reza as a vice chair.
Reza Khalili as the vice chair for the term beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024.
I would like to make that motion.
I like the efficiency. We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against, any abstentions? The resolution passes. That brings us to item G4, consider resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five five, appointing a member to serve in the vacant position one of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee for the term beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2025. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Okay, so this is to appoint for position one that is vacant. We did appoint for that position last month, but the person that was appointed, his schedule changed, and so he had to resign. We need to keep in mind, Mayor, you brought up at the last meeting about the requirements for this board, and I was thinking P&amp;Z, but it's actually the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, that it has to have a person, and since these, this appointment is going to serve in both places, and we don't currently ha, are not fulfilling this requirement at this time, this appointment has to be somebody with real estate development or building industry in their background. Now, if you choose to appoint somebody who doesn't have that, can you explain, they, I think they can appoint somebody from the community as a, not a voting member, but sits in, or?
Yeah, as an ad hoc member, so sits in, and then would actually only serve and have kind of the voting on that other board, wouldn't need to be there for P&amp;Z.
But currently, there is one person that has put in their application that is interested in serving, and that is Nestor Mena, who does have the building background.
Okay, discussion amongst council.
Nestor.
He's got the building background.
Do we know that if he's going to be okay with serving on two boards?
I asked him, and he was, yes, he said that he was definitely interested.
I move to appoint Nestor Mena.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against, any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item G5, consider resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five six, designating a city representative and an alternate representative as the Houston-Galveston Area Council's 2024, to the Houston-Galveston Area Council's 2024 General Assembly. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Okay, so on this item, first of all, the current representative is Michelle Mitchum, Councilmember Mitchum, and the alternate is Councilmember Singleton, and this will, this appointment will be for the 2024 General Assembly, and we need to keep in mind that the appointments need to be able to attend the Thursday, November 9, at 11 to 1 for their meeting concerning the General Assembly.
Okay, discussion amongst council.
I'm open.
Can, can y'all go?
Yeah, if I remember, only one of us has to be there? Yeah, yeah. I can be available if she's not available.
I'm available.
Pretty sure she's going to make it, though.
Unless someone else is really itching to put their name in there, I have an entertaining motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-three dash five six, designating Mayor Pro Tim Mitchum and Councilmember Singleton to this position. Is that good?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against, any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down here with Mayor Pro Tim Mitchum.
You did, I loved it, it was my favorite part of the whole meeting. Go Astros, and that's it.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Just a reminder that the fall frolic's coming up, so I hope to see you all there.
Councilmember Watson.
Second, both of the above, and remind you that there's voting going down in that room and all across Harris County for several, several things on the ballot, including bonds for the city of Jersey Village. Hope you do do those and go vote.
Councilmember Singleton.
A small town with big plans and many amenities. For those that have attended these meetings, you know that it's been months of talking about bonds. The voting is going on now. It's not a blank check. The projects discussed within the bonds are not guarantees. They are not bids, they are estimations and plans, and voting for it means that there will be...
We've probably should...
I'm going to stop you right there.
Yeah, let's, let's make sure when we're up here on this dais that, we, we wouldn't say vote for so-and-so for councilmember seat, we wouldn't say anything about for or against the bond, so I think it's perfectly fine to say you can find information about the bonds from the city website.
And good to say, go vote.
Yes, and go vote. Councilmember McCray.
I didn't mean to call you a councilwoman. It was an accident.
Oh, you're good.
Vote for all of it. Now I'm afraid to talk. Go Astros, I'm done.
It happens to the best of us. Yes, go out there and vote, early voting started today. There are, like Councilmember Watson said, there are multiple items on the, on the ballot. You can find those at the, I'm not even going to pretend that I can keep track of who's actually running it from now, for now, at this point, Harris County Clerk, I guess now, at Harrisvotes.com. You can find out, tons, tons of locations to go early vote, you don't have to necessarily vote here, you can vote at any of the locations throughout the county. So that, that's a good thing if you find yourself elsewhere and have an opportunity to vote. So, get out there and go vote. We are supposed to have an executive session, but I believe that, that we did not receive the information we needed to justify having it, so unless there's any objection from council, we're going to go ahead and skip that part of it. So, there is also no reason to have the discussion after the reconvening of the regular session, unless anyone has anything on that, nope. All right, so then in that case, meeting adjourned. Thank you, folks.